We're going to unmute and go live here momentarily.
Okay.
Good morning and welcome. It is Wednesday, January 22, 2025. This is the regular business meeting for the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Katie Jacobson has an excused absence. Commissioner Casey Miller and myself, Commissioner Claire Hall presiding, constitute a quorum of the board. We don't have any scheduled recognitions or proclamations. We do have a pretty full consent calendar. Commissioner Miller, any items you would like to highlight or exclude for separate action?
No items for me. Chair Hall and I would make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar today.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Consent calendar stands approved as presented. No public hearing. Decision and action item. We have American Tower property tax refunds presented by Joe Davidson, our assessor, Jane Welch, our treasurer. Come on up. Don't be shy, folks.
Okay, these are.
Okay, and if you could both introduce yourselves for the record, please, and thank you.
For the record, Jane Welch, Lincoln County Treasurer, Tax Collector.
Good morning. Joe Davidson, county assessor.
Thank you.
So these are the refunds due to an appeal from American Tower to the Department of Revenue, and this is the effect of the settlement over the tax years and under appeal. So total of $63,934.52, including interest.
Maybe could we get, just for the benefit of the audience or people watching online, kind of a brief summary of how this process goes with appeals evaluations of commercial property? Because I think some people may know about residential property, but this is a whole different kind of animal, isn't it really?
It is, and it's utility property, which is completely handled by the Department of Revenue. So it includes all of the underground utilities and the corporation as an entire entity. And so it's can't really identify particularly property like you can for real property because a lot of it's underground. And in this case, American Tower appealed. I don't know, we were not, the counties were not provided the details of the appeal and the settlement. But essentially, similar to our own appeal process, this is handled at the Oregon Tax Court. And in this case, I believe it went from the magistrate division and then up into the regular division of the Oregon Tax Court. And again, I don't know the details on the settlement. I apologize.
No problem. Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
No, no, I appreciate it. I would, Administrator Johnson, does this folding into the mid-year report in any shape or form, or no?
Not yet.
Okay.
Excuse me.
No, not yet.
And just for clarity, this is a five-year look back.
Oh.
It's comprised of a five-year look back.
Okay. Yeah, good point.
All right. This is listed as a decision action item. Are you comfortable, Commissioner, with voting on this today?
Yeah, I think we should move on this note that Jane said this goes back five years as well. So to Administrator Johnson, especially within lieu of the budgetary considerations, any recommendations on the motion for this?
No, we're kind of along for the ride on this. There's not much we can do as a county, so we have to take our lumps.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Okay. So I would make a motion today that we move forward with these refunds as they've been presented to us by Joe Davidson and our treasurer, Jane Welch.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's approved, and we are on to our discussion and information topics. Thank you both. And our administrator, Tim Johnson, will have the floor here for a mid-year budget report.
Mr. Lipp, can you pull that up too, so we can? Excellent, thank you.
And again, everybody knows the drill, I believe, but just please to introduce yourselves for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Johnson, County Administrator.
Renee Card, Budget Analyst.
Deanna Gribbel, Assistant Finance Director.
Okay, the three of us are here this morning because it is, quickly, the fiscal year has moved along for our mid-year financial report. We're going to walk you through this. I'm going to turn it over to Renee and Deanna here. But we will get into a variety of issues relative to the discussion specifically on our general fund. And when we do, I'll pop back in to work you through that and have recollection of what we did during the budget hearings and what the action the commission took. So with that, I'll turn it over to Renee.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the mid-year financial report. So if you move to the next slide. So today, as Tim said, we are mostly going to focus on the general fund. But we all, I have provided information on some other funds that are considered our major funds. And there will be a brief discussion on the budget process beginning, that we're beginning now for next fiscal year. So, so far this year, all the funds are actually at or below the expected values. Revenue is, at this time of year, is traditionally a little bit higher because property tax is a large portion of that in the general fund, and we have received that, most all of it already. But you know, if, if the budget continues as it has the first six months, I see no cause for alarm, nothing out of the ordinary. So for this year, we have 30 funds, we have 37 general fund departments, 55 other departments. We have $190 million budget. And at the moment, it, it looks like we, we stand to have a $5 to $6 million surplus in the general fund. So for the general fund, we, we started with a $55.9 million budget. And we move on to the next slide. I have broken down the revenue and expenditures for the general fund.
I know that's tough to look at, but if you have questions, please don't hesitate to ask yet.
Actually, if you don't mind, could we go back a slide to the discussion of the projection of a $5 to $6 million surplus? Is that the same as the ending fund balance at the end of the fiscal year?
Not exactly. We will be discussing that a little bit more in some future slides.
I mean, that's a good number to hear initially, but I just don't want people all of a sudden saying, oh, boy.
We will be discussing that.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
So I, I've, this is the entire general fund by category. And the general fund, the way we budget it is we break it down into the functions. And we do have four functions, and I've also done slides for each of the four functions so that you can see how those budget to actuals are at this time of the year. So we can move to the next slide. So this is the slide for general government. And then the next one, we have central services. And if you'd like to stop to take time to look at these, let me know. And then public safety. We're sitting at, you know, in the around 42%, 43% of total expenditures for quite a few of these. And then last, community services. So now, back to that surplus.
I guess this is where I come in. So to that end, if you recall during the budget process for '24, '25, as county administrator, my budget message to you last year going into this fiscal year was that we needed to cut approximately 3% of our budget in order to be able to address issues on a variety of items. And to do so, I looked at everybody's budget and recommended that we try to cut around the margins, specifically travel, materials, and services, and without having any impact on, on our labor force. The department heads, both appointed and elected, did so. And with that, it has proven fruitful in that, as Renee identified, our mid-year illustrates that we'll have between $5 to $6 million in a general fund surplus. Now, recall that we finished our audit and, and we finished it a year ago. It was presented to you by KDP Accounting Firm. And what they identified was out of $4.7 million, which then we can reconcile to our mid-year at a between $5 to $6 million. So we're headed the right direction in order to address a variety of different issues. First of all, we have a cost of living adjustment that has to be made to all of our employees. So what I'm telling you is let's not get too excited about, oh, boy, we got money we can go out and spend. You have obligations, you have fiduciary obligations in which to fulfill the, the cost of living for our employees. We've also almost, almost completed all of the labor negotiations. And so we have to make good on those labor contracts and increased costs associated with that. There are some prices, associated costs with the negotiations that have to be also reconciled. The audit costs were more significant this year because, as you looked, and, and again, something that I have been informing the commission since I've been here, that our books and our accounting really needs to be cleaned. And we identified that, again, one of the key issues is, is that we have a double-entry accounting system here. And it's only as good as people do double-entry. If they only do a single entry, we got a real problem on our hands. And you know, that was, was a significant issue. There are a couple other issues that need to be addressed that we will be bringing up in the context of budget amendments or budget supplements to you relative to our operations. One of those has been on the radar screen. You all know about it. That's the important nature of having a full compendium of nurses in our jail. And we need to address that specific issue. It's important for us on that. And as you also know, last summer, we went through an information technology tabletop exercise. And we learned real quickly about the issues associated with, I wouldn't call us as having a deficiency, but always being able to ensure that our systems are up to date against whatever attack we may be confronted by. And as such, we learned a tremendous amount. You were, you were there and participated in that, so you know exactly what I'm referring to. So.
And Administrator Johnson, to that point, do you imagine we'll be allocating more dollars for those purposes?
So a couple things that are, and I thank you for that question. There's a couple things that you need to know. First, in our budget, there was a, there is an ongoing allocation as a part of the indirect costs for running this county for the purposes of support of our servers and subsequent replacement of those hardware equipment. And to that end, that's one of the things that is constantly going on, but it's within our budget. So when we're looking at some of the other things that this general fund surplus may go to are those that were identified that would help ensure ourselves against changes that may occur by hackers that will try to get into a system. You know, they're constantly evolving every day. And some of those evolutions are what we have to be in front of. We protect so much information. And again, Health and Human Services has medical information. You just, our county assessor, our county treasurer has information. We're constantly ensuring the fact that that information remains private and confidential and out of the hands of people that are willing to exploit and use it for their gain against the unfortunate people who have been impacted. So I think it's very prudent for us to, to look at this in, in our directed efforts. So that's kind of where we're, we're looking at, and we, we foresaw that. There was no ifs, ands, buts. And so when you went through the budget process, we were, we were very meticulous with you in terms of knowing that we were going to have to have this, these cuts in order to be able to address these issues. Now, to that point, may I say, I'm pretty happy with the outcome. All of our employees that were, were here last year or the positions are here this year, so there isn't an issue there. People are getting paid more money. Issues addressing, I think, benefit packages. While we didn't see the numbers, I think extensively go up this fiscal year as they did in the previous fiscal year, specifically with our health, medical costs. They may have kind of plateaued for us this year, but that doesn't mean that next year we won't see it. And let me just share with you, I think all of you know that our insurance company is Regency Blue Cross Blue Shield. They have been in contract with the Providence Health System in this state. I might admit, I'm one of those members. And of course, they're on strike. And I don't know how that is going to impact the future budgets, but it's something that we're keeping a close attention to. So you know, maybe this conservative nature on our part is really going to pay dividends for us at some point by ensuring the fact that we stay within our budget too. And we're constantly watching it, just like everybody else that has a household budget. We too have a budget, and we've, we've stayed within it and I think are smarter because of it. I hope that answers some of the questions that you may have on this. Again, if there was any questions, we could go back and provide you with the budget message from last year. But all of that is transparent. All of that is available, I believe, on our website. I'm looking at a public information officer to make sure it is. The document is up there. And so you can go to it, you can read it, you can see it, you can watch it how it was articulated through the process. So this, this mid-year report is a key component for the commission so that you know that we are on track. We started that when you hired me three years ago. I said, do we do a mid-year report? And you all looked at me like, well, what's going on here? This is important so that you know that we are in line. Because if we have to make adjustments, which I'm not suggesting here today that we do, but in case we did, we had six months still left in the fiscal year in which to do that.
We're going to go through all the slides?
Yeah, if you'd like to, but I think, yeah. Turn it back over to Renee.
Sure, yeah. If you want to finish that up, then maybe more questions then.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Certainly.
Just a few more, so it shouldn't be long, so we can move on to the, the major funds. And I've broken those down to capital projects, ARPA, public health, behavioral health, and public works.
And notice where we are at with the American Rescue Plan Fund. This is one year of it, not the full element, which we'll, we'll be providing for you. which we'll, we'll be providing for you in April as we conclude our last and final Treasury Report, U.S. Treasury Report. And that'll give you a full understanding of how the total allocation was provided. I do want to share with you that I'm very proud of, of, of all the teams that were involved with the American Rescue Plan Act. Specifically, Commissioners, you helped, I say this humorously, helped ensure the fact that all of the dollars were placed under contract. We know that there are jurisdictions in this state that are having to disencumber funds and back to the federal government because they did not get it done in a timely manner. So to the credit of Lincoln County staff, kudos goes to all of them.
Okay, onward.
Move on to the budget. So next, next month, we will begin working on the new budget for fiscal year 25, 26. And we expect to open, open gov up for the departments next month. And then hopefully, all of that will be complete in March. And then we can begin to balance. And so I can start working on the budget book in April. And then Budget Committee meetings in May and adopted budget in June.
Okay, thank you. I've got another question. I guess what, I want to mention what, in my own words, what some of the key takeaways I think from this document are and test my assumptions with y'all. What I'm reading into this is we're in, I would say reasonably good shape right now, this moment, at this point in the budget process. We're not going to be going in, in a cut mindset. We're at least, you know, I'm not hearing anything that says, you know, we managed to keep everything going this current fiscal year, and there don't seem to be any major potholes or obstacles in the road to, yeah, suggest otherwise. But at the same time, it's not, it's not an open invitation to just start spending and adding those new positions. I'm sure we would all love to see to improve service to the public. But just have to go in the way we do every year with a cautious but optimistic mindset focused on maintaining service.
Let's see if I can't give you some historic perspective on this. It was 2010 where you ran into problems with the Great Recession in this county. At that point, you had to make major layoffs, and you did. Since that period of time, there has been an effort to try to rebuild since that, those layoffs. We've done a pretty good job on it. If you recall, when I got here in April of 2022, we had to reconcile the budget to get it to balance. And we worked on that, I worked on that for you. You should all remember that. And we got that taken care of. But within that effort, I said that my budget message to you was that there couldn't be no new general fund-based positions. We've kind of held on that pattern specifically because of the case of, of where we are today. The number one element that, again, both elected and appointed department heads identified was that they wanted to see in salary increases for our employees. We, I think we have done a pretty good job of being able to address those issues and achieve it. Now, within the context of the question you asked Chair Hall, I think one of the things is, is that we'll continue to probably have to hold the line going forward until we see fit some of the other elements that go on. We have a new presidential administration. Not sure what that is going to look like in terms of pass-through for a county in this state, let alone a rural county. So we'll have to take a look at that and make appropriate pivots where we need to make. At the same time, this staff has gotten pretty darn good, I think, over the last specifically two years. They're very conscious, I think, in terms of revenue generation and are becoming certainly clear and focused on looking at opportunities. I remind you all that a, in, that a vote occurred for increasing the transit room tax. It passed nearly by 70% of the vote. That money went to improve the campgrounds or is going for approving the campgrounds for our county parks. And yeah, we do pay ourselves, by the way, a transit room tax for that, for our own campground. So we pay into it. But I think that what we're seeing is an increase in, in tourists in the area because we're making a commitment to that activity. So that, that is one thing that I'd like to bring to your attention. And so in lieu of the transit room tax, or using general fund for that, they're using transit room tax. It does not impact the taxpayer here. So those monies were being redeployed within the, the system. And, and how they go out is based upon what the demand is and, and how you adopt that budget and what your priority is for use of those funds during the budget process. I also want to bring to your attention that we will have a new finance director on board starting next week. So expect a visit from him. Lennon Price is joining us and very happy. I'm sure Deanna Gravell is extremely happy. She's done a wonderful job in interim position for, how many, how many days has it been? I think she counts actually the minutes. And I think.
Sixty-three, I think.
Ah ha. You know, Deanna, you always have a nice, greet us with a nice cheerful face, smile, but it seemed a little extra big today. So now we know why.
I think she's actually counting it until when Lennon gets here. I think she could, she could tell us exactly what the, those minutes are between here and there. So to that end, staff will, county staff, departments will receive a budget letter here from me in not so near future. Please understand something. The timeliness of this report is earlier than what we did last year. I would, I'm working and will be working with the finance director so that it will always be the first meeting of the month of January. So, but, you know, we've been shorthanded. We've had to do a lot of tremendous work on our accounting and our budget. I think we're getting it to where it is a document that can be presented to the National Governing Officers of, our Governing Finance Officers Association for an award. I think our county should be very proud of the document where we're at, where it's going. So like I said, it's available online. We try to do everything now. I can remember three years ago, four years ago, it was nothing more than Excel spreadsheets. No, no indication whatsoever, goals and objectives, what the individual departments achieved, what their intent was to accomplish in, in, during the course of the fiscal year. That has all subsequently been changed. We have a budget that not only provides the spreadsheets and numbers, but also a narrative that explains what each and every department's budget and fund actually has achieved and what it will accomplish. And then also for people who learn several different ways, there's a series of graphs and charts for each one of the departments and each one of the funds. So you can see year-over-year progress, if not even a five-year time horizon that gives people a good idea of the stability of the county's budget. And so I think that should be illustrated to, as a credit to county staff. They've done a very good job of, of toeing the line on this.
Mr. Johnson, can I jump in here? And just, I think it kind of builds on what you've been saying that this is where the hard work begins and starts. And this is why we've had such stability of basic county services to the public. I'm jumping ahead a little bit to the next item. Our, our two proposed budget amendments, including from the Enterprise Fund, a new position in planning. And it notes specifically this will take planning from 13 to 14 total full-time positions. And I'm thinking of all the emails I get from people saying, ah, government, you're just interested in feathering your own nest, building empire, et cetera, et cetera. When we started that two years of budget cutting in 2009 and 10 because of the, because of the recession, planning at that time had 14 positions and ended up with 10 once all the dust had settled. So it's taken us 14 years to get back to that staffing level. And even though the overall population of the county hasn't changed by a lot in that time, we know. We, you just have to look around and see. It's been a pretty steady drumbeat of business, so.
Well, I've got to give credit to where credit's due. So in a relatively short period of time, when we changed to a county administrative form of government, I looked at county council and I looked at some of the department heads. And I said, when was the last time? Because I started doing forensic reviews of all of the departments. And I said, when was the last time we raised our permit fees? And of course, the two of you have been with the county for well over a decade plus. And I think you both, you know, figuratively scratched your head and go, I can't remember. And to that end, as we looked at planning and development, it had been years, years since they increased any fee. And then beyond that, recall that in 2014, there were two state statutes that were passed by the legislature. One was the use of a fee for increasing technology by our departments to improve customer service. We had not ever collected on that. Second element was, is that there is a fee for use of a credit card. While the county treasurer had gotten to several departments, we hadn't gotten a transition yet to planning and development. So with that came what I call, and I know Deanna always gets concerned when I say this, but it's called what I call enterprise funds. And enterprise funds are those that are collected as a part of a function of our operations. And that's, that's where this, this, this position will be funded and supported by in planning and development. So it is an opportunity for us to get ourselves, I think, corrected and on the right road through your, your leadership. You've, you've done that. And so you look at the opportunities that present itself. Our budget, previous year budget was 184 million. We jumped already to, in this, at mid-year to 190 million. But we still have the bond yet to go relative to the commons. And we have still another six months. So our expectation is, is that we're going to be closer to a quarter of a billion of dollars on this budget, which is something that the people of this county should be very, I guess, appreciative of because it is not increasing their taxes. We've kept within that, as you can see, and not having to deal with the, that we've just gotten more creative. And I think, I don't want to use, maybe that isn't a good for, maybe you should use the word innovative in which way we have approached our budgetary process. And that means that we're more accountable, we're more transparent, and we're solid, I think, in the way that we look at funding our program. So, yeah, they're not seeing any more increases than other than what the state allows us under Propositions 5 and 50.
Yeah. Okay. Any, yeah, well, yes, Chair Hall, please, yeah. This is such excellent foundational work. I mean, this is, this is, this is incredible. This is amazing, our budget book. Look at that compared to future iterations. Thank you so much. I mean, this is so important. And I, and I sense what is next for us is that strategic planning, too. So we can figure out where those priorities need to be, you know, especially when we're in a pinch. But just as general good business to know where we're going. Question or, and a recommendation may be bundled that our Budget Committee, too, is, you know, aware of this. I know John Heath is in the off, or in the, in the room today. I know he's here, but I think if we could loop them in to this process, let them be aware and, and, you know, bring them along is going to be tremendously useful. You had mentioned, Renee, that we're going to be reaching out to them. But I certainly hope that they can see this. And that'll get them set and ready for, you know, the finality of the season, if you will. Yeah, and I do appreciate, like, okay, nurses in the jail, the cybersecurity, you know, maybe until we can develop a full strategic plan for the county, could be a short list of things that we're identifying. Administrator Johnson, as we sort of finish off ARPA, you know, that may have created, hopefully, a lot of intended consequences that we wanted. Are there any unintended consequences as we sort of tail off of it that we need to be aware of? I mean, that's, I know, kind of a random question.
No, it's a very good question, and I appreciate it. It's kind of like for those of us who get caught on sugar. The ability to receive those federal dollars. And they didn't just begin and end with ARPA. Remember, there were three different, there were three different deployments that came into us. There was the CARES Act, which was the first salvo that came in when we all were in, in, I don't know how best to say this, lockdown or whatever you wanted to call what we were going through. And those dollars that came through. Now, those dollars were predominantly focused at Health and Human Services and vaccination and, and the issues associated with addressing that so that there were no costs to local government such as Lincoln County. The second element, obviously, was the American Rescue Plan Act. The third was the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. And so a tremendous amount of money has come into the county. I think we've used it appropriately in the context of helping our, our constituents. You know, there is a major report that, that is being worked on right now by county staff on how that money was used. I'll give you just a couple of examples. I think one of them was an outreach to countywide on spay and neuter a program, which was a grant program that was, that was very successful. I don't have the numbers, but we will be providing those. And they're in the hundreds of, of animals that were, were served. The next one that I always find interesting was on childcare, childcare support. Grant dollars went out to help the, in the growth and expansion of childcare businesses. And one of them, I think, that is, that we didn't have before was we reached the goal of having 24-hour childcare in the county by having a provider that did provide or still does provide evening services for parents. So, you know, those are just a couple of examples of the many programs that were provided. that were provided in the community utilizing these dollars. And so one of the things that I look at is, is that when you come off of something like that, how then do you leverage that going forward? Are there specific things? Let me just stop for a moment and, and pose this question back to you. Is, is that you have three grant programs in, in the county that you oversee. And so directions relative to the Community and Economic Development Grant, to community services grants, to emergency management grant program. How you want to utilize those and, and maybe build upon what you couldn't get done with ARPA and how you want to utilize those is, I think, a good either tactical or strategic plan on your part, which way you want to take it. There's, you know, the county's put millions of dollars to community-based nonprofit organizations. So that's, I think, is worthy of your time and direction for us as county staff to know what you would like to do with, with that. But again, coming off of a high like that allocation really enabled us to do things that maybe you wouldn't have been able to do and would have been struggling. And I think you, you found that. I'm always, I, I say this tongue in cheek. The last two meetings that you had of last year, you dealt with the repairs of elevators in this building. Yet next Wednesday, we start an analysis on looking at the county's facility space needs, which I think are really important. What are you going to look like in 20 to 30 years from now? Both of those were based upon the use of American Rescue Plan dollars. I would hate to see any of our customers stuck in an elevator because we didn't, we didn't repair it appropriately in this building. That would be embarrassment and certainly not something I would wish on any of the folks that are visiting us and doing business here. And on the other behalf, I think that it's important that we're also having a, an updated seismic report on this building. And I don't like to draw anybody's attention to it, but there was a 2007 report that said it wouldn't take much for this building to become deficient relatively quickly because this building is not seismically sound. It does not have any sheer walls in it. And so the answer and solution to it is we're going to have to come up with one and figure out how we're going to address that. And I know that you will. And at the same behalf, things like the animal shelter has been supported by ARPA in its construction. And it's really with this great weather, the last two weeks, it's really going to town on, on getting towards completion. So I think that's what I, my only concern is, is that we didn't, for the last three years, we didn't become heavily dependent upon a federal grant program. But I, again, I can't amplify enough, and I know I've talked way too much, but I think it's really important that county staff understand this. They've done a tremendous job, particularly over the last two years. The amount of grant dollars that they've written, which exceeds $20 million, is phenomenal for an organization of our size. And I tip my hat to all of them who have, have achieved this. I know it has been difficult on these two ladies and others in finance because a lot of money has come in in a relatively short period of time. And it's made for some, I think, some long weeks. And, and as I said, I think Deanna is looking forward to having Lennon in, in the office next week. But they've done a tremendous job.
Yeah, and, yeah, we need to, and I echo that because when we look at something like these grants that have come in, you know, it's been amazing that we could leverage that. But also that, you know, our planning as we move forward helps the community parse too between these opportunities that came in and what was a one-time thing, you know, outside of the encouraging report here, which is maybe routine outside of those grant funds. So just that the public understands where we're going outside of those things. Just imagine what we were if we didn't have ARPA, for example. So I appreciate you elaborating on it. And of course, you know, the time you guys have put in has been amazing, so thank you. And I, I think with our new finance director, hopefully it gives everybody a little bit more breathing room. So, yeah, this is a great, great mid-year report. Thank you.
I hardly agree.
Yeah, I don't think, any other comments for me, really?
Are we ready to move into the discussion of the recommended budget amendments now?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Do we need, do we need approval? County Council, do we need approval on this? Just, okay.
You mean motion?
Yeah, motion.
Essentially, okay.
If you're fine.
But it's online.
It's online, it's available.
Excellent.
Okay, the floor is yours still.
All right, so we can move on to the budget amendments. So these are just the normal routine amendments that we do, try to do them quarterly. And so for these, we're only amending the general fund and the behavioral health fund. The behavioral health fund amendment is just an appropriation transfer to pull money from contingency to capital. But the general fund is, is a little more extensive. We are adjusting several departments, whether it's new funding, some to new positions, some revenues going up or down based on information we didn't have at the time of the, you know, budget was originally done. So if you have any questions.
I want to add one thing. What we don't have today for you, and we're still reconciling things, there will be an amendment, a budget amendment for Veterans Office, our Veterans Affairs Office on that due to the state contribution. So there will be, it just, it, it came in late, so you will see it probably. Yeah, in a separate.
Probably be in the next round.
The next round, okay.
And we also received during, shortly after the fiscal year started, we received a $35,000 grant from the state for the county fair. That came in as a part of the CARES Act, not ARPA, from what the state has done. So we have that. And then we just got another check from the state yesterday for the fair as it always receives corresponding state dollars. So I think there's, be a total of just about $88,000 that will be amended to our budget positively just for the fair alone for this upcoming year.
Okay.
So you'll get that. And, but it, it, the information came late to us, so apologies.
Okay, and yeah, Administrator, just that's not to convolute the motion we may need today here for resolutions?
Right, no, yeah. That'll be something separate, but we wanted to forewarn you and let you know that there's still more out there coming our way.
Okay.
So is there any time urgency that we adopt these amendments today? Or could we bring it back as decision items next week? I mean, it all looks pretty, two weeks, I mean, yeah.
Usually we wait for a discussion.
Yeah, see if there's any public questions or input. All right, is there consensus to do that, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I would agree before we make that. Yes, I have consensus, Chair, but this is great.
Yep.
As presented, I think very detailed.
So may I ask, can we put this on consent agenda for the next?
Yes, consent agenda in next meeting, two weeks.
Very good.
All right, first reading of ordinance number 540, Wildlife Rebuild Special Property Tax Assessment.
Thank you.
County Council Yule?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, Kristin Yule, County Council, would you like the full text, Rod, or title only?
Title only, please.
Yes, that's fine for me as well, thank you.
Okay. Before the Board of Commissioners from Lincoln County, Oregon, ordinance number 540, relating to wildfire rebuild special property tax assessments in unincorporated Lincoln County and declaring an emergency. So Commissioners, I just want to give a little background. So the ordinance is in response to Senate Bill 1545, which was passed in the 24 legislature legislative session. It addresses the urgent need to reset property tax assessments for residents who were part of the Echo Mountain wildfire. So that was in 2020. A little more background, so under Oregon's currently property tax laws, the assessments are subject to certain limitations. So your maximum assessed value of unchanged properties can increase by no more than 3% every year. However, if there's legal or physical changes to the property, such as rebuilding after a wildfire, the exceptions to this limit often result in significant property increases to the affected residents. So the ordinance will provide relief to the fire-impacted residents. It will allow them to reset their property taxes to their homestead's real market value for the 2021 tax year, which would be based on the original square footage of the original residence. So the ordinance may lower property taxes back to pre-fire rates for some of those who have rebuilt or plan to rebuild their homes on the same tax lot. Any questions?
I have no questions. I think that is excellent, really.
Some other counties, Marion and Lynn have both adopted it. Clackamas and Lane have declined. So we would be, I guess, in a minority of counties who are adopting it.
Any idea why they've declined, or?
I think the amount of taxes they would have to reimburse was significant.
So do we have an official count of how many homes were lost? And home sites that potentially could be eligible?
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I'm going to have the, our assessor answer. We don't have an amount, definite amount of what would be impacted for refunds. It's hard to predict.
But home sites or homes potentially?
I don't have, it's, it's very complicated to administer this program. We don't have the resources to do it. We've kind of planned it out. Got to commend our IT department because they, they were able to revive our old legacy system that had all that detail that we needed in order to administer this. Prior to that, as you know, we converted assessment tax software in '22. And so we have the detail from that point forward for all the segment level detail at each property. But prior to that, we just had an overall value for each individual property. Now that's segment level that we need. Because as, as stated in this ordinance, this just applies to the dwelling. It wouldn't include garages and shops, things like that. It's just the principal dwelling, homestead. And so we needed to be able to break out the improvement value to, okay, what's, what's the house? What's the garage? What's the shed? In order to administer this program. And so up until just a few weeks ago, we didn't have that detail until our IT department was able to, basically it's being served through the cloud now. It was a company out of Portland called Converge. And so we're able to kind of revive that old data.
Okay, what I was, I'm sorry, what I was trying to get to, I mean, it seemed like all throughout the coverage of the fire and its aftermath, we heard, I guess it was Department of Forestry's official count of number of homes destroyed or significantly damaged. And it seemed like it always varied by just a handful of numbers, but we still don't really have one definitive number that everybody's agreed on? Is that what I'm hearing?
Number of homesteads, it was, and I presented this back in July, so just to kind of reiterate. We estimated about 288 homesteads.
That's what, okay, thank you.
However, under this program, it needs to be the, the original owner of the homestead at the time of fire. So that would exclude any properties that have changed ownership since that time. And obviously, it, eligible properties would be ones that have already been rebuilt. We've estimated about 200 properties have been rebuilt. And of those, 25% roughly have, have already changed ownership since the fire. And so those would be excluded. So roughly 150 properties have rebuilt dwellings that would potentially qualify. There's other qualifying factors, like it has to be the principal dwelling. It couldn't be a second home in order to qualify for this program. But on the surface, 150 potentially eligible properties that have been rebuilt.
So it sounds like a big lift, but manageable?
Yeah.
Sure, we've had some internal meetings in my office. And I think, and like I said, with the help from our IT department to have that segment level detail, I think we can do it. It's going to take some hours. Because it's really, you've got to sit down and look at the property, but hey, what's, what's a qualifying home? And then what's the qualifying square footage? Because how about a home that was destroyed in the fire and rebuilt bigger? And so the whole house wouldn't qualify on that basis, it's the original square footage. The, the excess would be assessed and taxed regularly.
Joe, is there anything else? I mean, the concept looks good. Any tweaks or details, I mean, we can help you with?
A little tweak to the ordinance. And it was just a flaw in the original bill. And so we have to address that in the, in the ordinance before you. There are applications available from the Department of Revenue. And so if and when this is approved, we will make those available on our website. We'll likely send out flyers to the residents.
Yeah, as far as communication?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It read, there you go. So internal communications, Joe, through, you know, your department, but any outreach that would be useful as well to help people know that they might be candidates? And it's kind of a interesting population to try and
Right.
reach out to.
Similar to the proration of tax, that was all by application previously after the fires. We, we sent out flyers, we sent out media releases. And so we'll try to do that again, as much outreach as possible, because this is by application, the special assessment program. We would need to receive an application in order to start processing the adjustment and any sort of refunds that might go out. And again, this is retroactive. And so we've had four tax years now since the wildfires, '21, '22, '23. And we just, we're in '24 right now. And so any sort of overpayment would be retroactive for all of, all four of those tax years. And then the special assessment would obviously proceed through subsequent years, so long as it's the original owner that, that remains there.
Okay.
Any further questions, Commissioner Miller?
I don't think so.
Uh, do we have a consensus to bring this back in two weeks as a consent calendar item?
I think so, yeah.
So it would have to go as a second reading?
Oh, that's right.
And then a decision action.
Yeah, okay.
So our second reading will come?
February 5th.
February 5th?
Yep. All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
Okay, we are at the point in the agenda for Commissioner reports. Do you have anything today, Commissioner Miller?
I do not.
Okay, I don't either, so we will move on to public comments. And generally, we take online public comment. Then we invite, oh, we note if any written comment has been submitted. And then we take comments from people in the room who have signed up. And do Mr., do we have anybody who submitted written comment prior to the deadline?
We do, Chair, and it is attached to the agenda. If you just look under Public Comment 12225.
Okay.
And if there is anyone who is on Zoom who would like to give comment, would you please use the raise hand function? It does not appear so.
Okay. Has anybody signed up on the, Mr. Lipp? Let's see.
Is it Rhonda Harmon?
Okay. And the timeframe for this is up to three minutes per person. We ask you introduce yourself by name. Generally, we don't answer questions or do a dialogue. We will follow up if necessary or appropriate. All right, if you would introduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
My name is Rhonda Harmon. My concern is about Casey, Casey Miller. My concern is about Casey, Casey Miller. And that, as I know that he served as a public information officer for 14 years, and so he knows the rules better than probably anybody. Yet, he disclosed confidential information, and I'm not confident in his ability to represent us anymore. Maybe that's why Katie left, I don't know. I haven't talked to her personally. But, you know, what are the options here? Who makes the decision? And I thank you for your apology, too.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
And we have Kathy Deveraux? No?
Okay.
And then Monica Kirk.
My name is Monica Kirk. I live in unincorporated Lincoln County, and I am not representing any organization. It's time for us, including other elected officials, to support Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Miller and their staff, including County Council Kristin Yule, to work towards appointing a qualified person to fill Commissioner Jacobson's seat. I think it's time for everyone to stick to verifiable facts, myself included, and this means setting aside rancor and judge, and grudges. However, I can't forget the destabilizing impacts of recent actions by three other elected power centers represented by Judge Barkhart, retired Sheriff Landers, and the District Attorney on the Board of Commissioners, beginning perhaps with the lawsuit filed by the former District Attorney against all three Commissioners and threats that she would have them arrested. She retired, or she suddenly resigned and moved away, but not before almost all of her assistant prosecutors resigned, and the Oregon Attorney General had to intervene. The current DA was recruited by the former DA who resigned and served as her deputy. Judge Backhart publicly supported both candidates for the attorney, for the position of District Attorney. At this point, my interest is in a stable, local government with elected officials, and this includes Commissioners, the sheriff, the judges, and the district attorneys who respect one another as the choice of their constituents and work things out like adults. There should be no more lawsuits, stunts by elected officials who are quick to impugn ulterior and sinister motives and fail to confirm facts before publicly confronting the Board of Commissioners. There should also be no more public disclosures of confidential personnel information or dramatic Commissioner reports. Katie Jacobson's resignation is a huge loss to this county. She sees public service as an honor. Public service is about collaborating, not struggling to preserve personal power.
Excuse me, Monica, we're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Do we have anybody else signed up?
No, Chair.
Okay, I'll make one call for anyone in the room who has not spoken under public comment but would like to do so. That opportunity is right now. All right, we do not have a scheduled executive session. Next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, both live in person in this room and on the internet.
Chair?
Yes? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, well, yes, and I do want just to address one thing. I know we don't tend to respond, but I do want to ensure our county employees that I have their best interest in mind. I know what it's like to be an employee of 14 years for this organization, and just please be assured, any comments that I have made never intend to make anyone hurt or stressed or feelings of distress. I just want to assure you of that if you're listening to this or, or hearing that. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that plug out there, okay? Thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me. I want to make sure that you know that Wednesday, January 29th, we have a, a public meeting with the Commissioners on the courthouse space needs assessment kickoff, and it will be here. It will be a public meeting. It will be with all department heads appointed and elected with the consultant DSR group to begin the process at 8:30 on January 29th. That will be on Zoom, in case you want to watch it and can't make it here, it will be available.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Nope.
We're adjourned. Thank you.